So this will be. I'm going to suggest that we all use the little hand raising thing when we want to talk because that's going to be easier to take. Make sure we see everybody. Anybody else have any other tips you found work when we do a virtual meeting? Okay, cool. So the first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I sent in some changes that I know Mitch took care of and I think Doug sent in a couple as well. I assume everybody saw all of those. They were just editorial changes. Does anyone have any additional changes to the minutes of October 24th?
Hey Johnny, it's Benita. Give me a minute. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to find the keys to my house to get in my house. But I did have sort of an add-on to the, under the subcommittee reports. And there's the reference that I suggested a tour of the library. And it was actually more than that. I had sort of updated the group on the fact that the library commission had concluded its meetings in October and we were still looking for, you know, a couple of ways to engage. And so this tour was one way to include the library commission with the trustees in that tour. And the other element was the policies. And we agreed that the December meeting, I think it's December 5th would be where the mission members would be invited to that meeting. And we'd have a discussion related to the policies and governance issues related to the library.
Okay, is that enough, Kim and Kelly, to make those change, those additions to the minutes?
Yes, I think it is. Are you satisfied with that, Kelly?
Yep, I got it.
Great. Any other changes or additions? I get a motion to approve. You can just raise a hand.
I didn't see any hands. Probably the people who aren't on camera are raising their hands.
See Jen has given us a little bit of a party thing.
I'm giving you a party thing. I don't know where the raise hand thing is anymore. Sorry, I'd never use it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Doug, Doug moves Jen seconds. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, great. They pass unanimously. Great. Margot, you want to take it away with the transition update?
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I've been switching between all the things today and sometimes it doesn't like the microphone. So I'm glad it is working. Let me try to share my screen. And this, can you all see my screen? Great. Okay, well, hi everyone. It's good to see you again. I know it's been a couple of weeks, actually about a month or two. But hopefully you've been getting some periodic updates about the transition. And I just wanted to come back today to give you an overview of where we are. And dive in a little more deeply to start the conversation around some policy planning. So we will talk about that and have leave that into the discussion. So first, I think it's worthy of a quick pause and celebration and congratulations. There have been some really major milestones that the team has accomplished in the last month plus. Lots of hard work's gone into these things. And it's really important in a big project like this, when they're just constantly thinking of the next thing, to really take a pause and look at what you've always success, been able to be successful in. So obviously huge news, the finalization of the IDA, major, major work and huge congratulations. And that is providing a lot of clarity for the team to be able to move forward on executing all of those things. So congratulations on that. And the other thing that was recently, recently accomplished about middle last week is that 100% of the staff have been onboarded as library district employees. So that was a huge, major push to get everyone through the new, brand new process, which no one's ever done before in a brand new system. And, and so really phenomenal work on the library team, both Jennifer and Tim, as well as all the supervisors helping support, get that done. And it went really smoothly overall. And so that was a really huge success. From an IT perspective, there have been a lot of major milestones in the last couple of weeks. The most exciting of which is that they've completed the network and software equipment pyramid. And so that was when we started the project, that was a point of potential risk and concern of how long that would take. And that has gone really smoothly. And I actually talked to them today. They have truckloads of computers getting brought into their office. This Focus Connect is receiving them. So, so lots about to start happening on that. So I'll share more about that. And then today, nine positions were posted. So as you obviously know, there's going to be a lot of staff growth with the coming transition. And so in order to try to get positions starting at the first of the year, the, the hiring process needed to start now. And so that has been rolled out today. It's going through using Paylocity as the main hub for that. But positions have been posted in a wide variety of places. Job descriptions were updated, questions are planned, interviews are already on schedule. So it's looking really good to get some of the major positions in place in the beginning of the year. It's a really great work on all of that. And so just bringing back this chart that we looked at a few, a month or two ago. I'm just going to go through some, some high level updates on these things and happy to answer any questions that you have about them as I talk through it. The first, let me see. So the first, as you can see, lots of checks going on. So again, this is super high level, but a lot has been accomplished. And overall, we're really on track with all the major tasks that are, were, have been identified and were required to make sure that this transition happens smoothly and on time and on budget. So the major things that are happening right now are in yellow. As you can see, it's a lot. So I'll go down the list, kind of in this zone here where we are right now. So Sage Intact, the financial system is being worked on behind the scenes. And everything's moving smoothly with that. There's going to be a lot of work being done November to get everything inputted. And then there, the transition will happen from QuickBooks into Sage Intact. Contracting, this is an ongoing process, which we've been working with pretty much the members of the staff who are responsible for those contracts, as well as the city to identify of the list of contracts we have, which we have all compiled, or identifying which of those needs to either be separated and terminated from the city and reestablished with the district, or transferred or established new. And so we have been regularly updating that and continuing to, to work through that. And nothing in that world seems to be a major concern right now. Everything seems to be like it'll be able to be rolled out in, in the necessary timeline. The IT migration, major updates there. As I mentioned, obviously, the procurement has gone really smoothly. Right now, the main priority, well, as I'll, as I'll quote, are the team who's working on it. They're putting the foot, feet on the gas right now. Because this is like, they have about a month to finish all of the behind the scenes design. So the priorities right now are getting the cloud architecture finished, which means that they're going to be essentially preparing to do the migration. So they have to design the new system to mimic what it currently is. That when they transfer everything, it can look the same for people who are using it. And so there's a lot of imaging happening and staging happening to prepare for that. And then there's going to be the process of doing the transfer and testing before it all goes through. And then computers are handed out and people can start logging on. And there also has been a lot of ongoing, really great work between the city's IT team and Focus Connect and the library's IT staff. And so there's regular meetings happening once a week to talk about upcoming priorities. Who needs to do what, what? And overall, the staff with the, the city IT staff has been very supportive and helpful in making sure that the transition's happening and will happen on time. So it's, it's very detailed. Those meetings are quite detailed. And I don't always know exactly what they're talking about of all the little details. But overall, I can, I'm confident that there's, they're working very well together and that things are moving along really smoothly. And Focus Connect has been really wonderful and they're really great to work with and have been doing a really wonderful job. So that was a great choice in hiring them. Policy planning, I'm going to skip over that because we'll come back to that. Paylocity implementation, as, as you've heard, this, it's up and running. And the staff are using it in a variety of ways. So staff are now comfortable and know how to use it for everything from recruitment to hiring, to onboarding, as well as job postings. The next phase of that project is to make sure that all of the behind the scenes integration is happening. So for example, with the upcoming benefits enrollment period, making sure that that, the benefits enrollment system that's going to be used this year is able to connect to the Paylocity system and connect to individual people. And then also some staff training that's going to be needed. So that staff know how to go in there and navigate it themselves. So that's kind of the next phase of work on a, on a big scale from Paylocity. Job postings and offers are currently happening. We already talked about that. There has been a lot of, of work already and continual work around phasing the staffing plans for next year. It's that's ongoing work that's happening, as well as making sure that the staff currently, the, the staff who do have, if there are questions around, you know, what positions are even available? Who gets opportunities to apply to those? There's been communication around that and ongoing ways in which the staff can get those answers. Just today, there was a staff chat that David hosted to make sure that staff understood and had the opportunity to ask any questions about possible opportunities for, for career growth and how we're doing, how the hiring process will go for these new positions, who's eligible. And so that was a result of some staff asking questions. And so we wanted to make sure to get ahead of that and make sure that people felt like they understood what was going on. And so that's being, is underway and is, will continue to answer questions as they come in. And then in terms of facilities, as you know, there is a currently a RFP out for the, to look, find a vendor to help design the workspace to make sure that we can accommodate all of the new staff coming in. And so on Friday, that should close and proposals are due. And so over the next, on a couple of weeks, they'll be, you know, looking at a company to come on board for that. And then it's going to be a relatively quick turnaround on being able to bring someone on and get some questions answered. So hopefully by January, there's clarity about who will go where and, and make sure that there's enough space and people are comfortable in all the branches. And then ongoing internal external communication. So staff continue to get updates about the transition and all of the things that are related to them on a very regular basis. There's a newsletter that continues to go out every, every one to two weeks, depending on the need. Typically, also David follows up with an email and then supervisors have received information from their LT managers. And so we've been doing, I think we've been doing a pretty good job of keeping everyone in the loop on what they need to know. And we so far have not heard too many concerns from staff about transition related issues. We're trying to get ahead of a most of the information that they might need to know that's going to impact them. And so they have a version of this chart that's really just staff focused on what things they're going to have to do. So for example, you know, they're going to have to turn in their device for the city and receive a new device. So we're starting to plant the seeds to let them know that's coming. And when we have, as we plan the details of it, we'll tell them more. And so there is continual opportunities for people to ask any questions, but we're not hearing any major concerns from current, from current or existing staff. So that's a really good sign. So before I go into the conversation around policy planning, I want to pause there and see if there's any other questions that I can answer about kind of how everything's working with the transition so far. Yeah.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Yeah, thanks, Margot. This is great. It's wonderful to see it all laid out here. And not that I think we don't have enough, but I, I think there's two things maybe it would be helpful to add into the financial column. And that's onboarding the auditor and onboarding the insurance broker.
Okay, great. Yeah, okay.
This box under technology that says procurement, hardware and licensing?
It probably should say software.
Software, okay. So it just isn't green and it, or isn't yellow and it hasn't been checked. So.
Oh, it's not. It deserves a check mark.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I guess so not all the licensing is fully complete, but all the hardware and network purchasing devices are done. So that's a half and half. So maybe a half check mark. But the Microsoft tenant has already been established for the district. So I will, I can follow up with, and follow up and find out exactly where the software procurement and status is. But the, all of the hardware and devices is complete.
Okay, yeah, I just, that's part of the, what's the vendor's name? Focus Connect, scope of work. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good call. Thank you. I have a lot of versions of this. I'm surprised there's not another one that I threw out to check. But, okay. So with that, I don't see any other question. Oh, yep.
Yeah, Margot, can you send either to Jennifer or to us a copy of the presentation so we can include it in the minutes?
Sure. No, I'll send it afterwards.
Thank you. Just fantastic work. Keep it up.
Not too much. I'm just the orchestrator. Everyone, it's really Jennifer and the rest of the team that's doing so much work. But it's been, it's been fun. Everyone's, it's a great team to work with. So it's been a good, great project to be on so far. So we're going to spend a few minutes talking about a, the plan for reviewing policies. And so we had a conversation last week and I wanted to propose a recommended plan to, for you to consider and then let you talk and figure out if this works for you and if this sounds like the right plan of attack. So as you saw, there's pretty much three categories of policies that we have, that the library district has to consider. One is patron policies. So these are the public facing operations. And we think that all patron policies will go through the board approval at some point. And so, because this is what's going to be impacted by the public. And so we need to be, we need to establish a timeline and a plan to have the board check in, update and/or approve the policies over the next few years. There are many, and so it will take a few years to get through them all, but not all of them. Many of them have been reviewed in very recently. And so we're going to do a prioritization exercise and come back to you with a recommendation on which policies should be reviewed and what timeline. So patron policies are something that the board will definitely have eyes on. And the administrative policies, those are really around internal personnel, financial and administrative. Most of those policies probably won't need to come to the board and because they're going to be about how David and Jennifer are going to run the team or internal operations. With the exception of the financials, the auditor will be coming to talk about some of the policies related to the financial pieces. And so there's going to be, that will be led by the auditor though. And then the last kind of category is governance policies related to the board of directors' operations. And so there's a list of policies that the board needs to review and cover over a period of time. And so that needs to be part of this kind of plan as well. So what we discussed last week and wanted to open for conversation here is the following timeline, which has us internally working on a recommendation that includes developing a three to four year plan that has a schedule of all the patron policies. And that will so kind of, you know, here's a list of all the policies. Here's a quick little overview of what they are. And then looking at when the board will be to revisit that. And so that will be recommend, recommended. At the same time, we'll also prepare a list of the administrative policies, not for full review, but just so you know that they exist internally. That's under the administrative policy section. Then the plan is to come back to the board on December 5th and review the recommended policy timeline. And at that point, formally adopt the policies, the current patron policies as it is. The library district can start functioning on January 1st with adopted, an adopted set of public patron policies with a known plan of when you're going to be revisiting them. And then at that point, also review the plan for the governance policies and map out what, how you will plan to establish the policies for, specifically for the board of directors during that time. And then on December 12th, there will be an opportunity for the auditor to come and talk about the specific financial policies that need to be reviewed for the board. And as well as reviewing the code of contact, conduct and the theater policy you have, which have been identified as the top priority for kind of urgent review, if you will, before the end of the year by the board. And so those will be the first two to be reviewed during, and hopefully approved or edited altered during the December 12th meeting. And then starting in the new year, you'll essentially start rolling out the plan, which will have been proposed and reviewed. And so that such that two patron policies will be reviewed for a meeting according to the program schedule. And so there really needs to be kind of management of the, the review process because these, the policies could turn into a whole meeting in and of itself. And so we're proposing that we only ever review two at a time, which is how we'll base our schedule. So we'll work backwards to make sure that, that there's two proposed for review at each meeting and such that we can get through them all in hopefully a three year, three to four year period, depending on how much work they each need. So I'll stop there and kind of open it up for discussion. Because what I understood from our last meeting is that we wanted to get any questions answered or buy in that this approach is, is, makes sense to you all and feels right, like the right way to do it so that then we can go internally and start working on these next steps before the December 5th meeting.
Margaret, this overview has been great. Thank you. Before we jump into questions, I wonder, Jennifer, if you can explain to folks how the policy review takes place in staff before it comes to us? Because I know you have an internal policy first and some of us, I think, are familiar with that, but not everybody is.
Yeah, so leadership team members take the policy that kind of falls under their, their areas. So for example, theater rental policy will be spearheaded by Jamie Kopke and her crew. So they take a look at it and they mark up the policy with their changes. And then it comes to the leadership team for review. We make further changes and adjustments. And then typically what I've done for library commission is prepared a memo with a kind of a description of the changes and why we're proposing them. The commission has typically taken one meeting to review those changes and offer some of their own, which we incorporate and bring back the second month. And usually they are able to approve it that second month. On rare occasions, the policy is either simple or there aren't very many changes to be made. And the commission has been able to approve it the same night that they review the initial draft changes from the staff.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments about this, folks?
I have a potentially dumb question. That might have been covered. The, so it says that we're going to develop a schedule for review. Is that we'll, we'll develop a schedule for like those three categories? So like in 2024, we'll deal with patron facing. In 2025, we deal with administrative. Like, is that what, is that what's meant by that? Or is it like specific policies will be in specific months?
Specific policies will be in specific months, I think. And with the focus on at least the work between now and, and November 27th, so that it gets in your, in your packet in time for the December 5th meeting, was in, we were going to try to focus on organizing the patron policies because we know that those are policies that the board will want to prove over the next few years. Honestly, Johnny, I actually need, would, would have you weigh in a little bit more on how the governance policies would be sprinkled into the plan as well? Because I, I don't know exactly how you want to organize that or add to the, you know, patron policy review and then governance policy review.
Okay. So Sylvia and I are, are meeting in the same time period to develop a proposed plan on governance policies, changes to the bylaws, new policies and those kinds of things. So we hope to present both of those at the same time on December 5th. So we would be reviewing those two. For the administrative category, I think the thought is that we won't really be reviewing many of those outside the financial realm because most of them are just in the workings of the library. And the auditor has indicated that they would work with us in developing the financial one. So when the auditor's onboard, presumably we'll then have a schedule for the financial one. And so we'll work those in together. I was hoping that going forward into the new year, we could actually have standing items for both public facing policies and governance policies on the same meeting. It may depend on how heavy those policies are, you know, how we adjust them. But we can talk about that when we kind of see the list and see if there are issues people have or things we need to flag and that sort of thing. Yeah, Benita.
So I, I appreciate the schedule and the planning document here very much. And just to follow on what Johnny was saying and to also loop back to my correction to the minutes to include the library commission. So library commission would plan to be at the December 5th meeting. And most of the policies of the commission are patron facing. Is that right? Do everyone agree with that? Yeah. Okay, so that will be a discussion with the library commission for that scope. I just wanted to clarify that. And then I was thinking about this, the thought of the two patron policies per meeting. And when we get to that schedule, are we still thinking that the, the commission, I mean, would the commission be dropping back to meeting once a month?
Commission will be gone.
I mean, not the commission, the trustees.
I think that's something for us to discuss in, in January. Personally, I think it's probably going to need to be twice a month, at least until we get through the first few months of the year. The expectation in the appointment process was twice a month. I don't know when that was intended to end, but I think that's something for us to discuss when we look at the workload. I'm, I'm working on a advanced agenda planning for the rest of the year. And my hope is after we get through this in December, in the first week of January, we can step back and look at the work plan for the board overall and decide whether it's once a month or twice a month at that point. But at least looking at what's on the, on the timeline now from having discussions with David and the staff, it looks to me like twice a month is probably realistic.
Okay. So I was just trying to figure out just number of policies and what we would be accomplishing in a year's time. Will there be a prioritization of some of these policies that will then take on?
Yeah. So I think what we're going to do, David, Jennifer, and maybe some others who are kind of more, who maybe have previous involvement with developing the policies, there's going to be a process to, like when we go through the list and start mapping out when it will happen, it'll, the timing will be based on the priority in which it needs to be done. Whether it was, it's whether it's due for a review because it hasn't been looked at for a couple of years or whether a situation has changed, which requires it to be prioritized. And so pretty much like review dates and circumstantial priority are going to be the, or circumstances are going to be the two main factors to, to consider. But I think one other piece that we could add to that process to make it easier when you're looking at the full list is potentially an, maybe an estimated kind of weightings level in some way that shows kind of like which policies might be more straightforward versus which might take, which you can anticipate taking longer to review. And so that might help in terms of how we figure out what, how many should be, or which ones should be almost paired together, right? Like if there's two real ones that require deep and like revisiting and we might, we obviously wouldn't want to pair those at the same meeting. David, I see your, your hand up. So please jump in if you want clarity.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. So it's a good question, Benita. We, I mean, we have good policies. So the commission, I think, did great work. It's not a, it's not a massive lift for us to do this. There are, I would say, a handful of policies, maybe a couple more than a handful that are now, I would say inadequate without the cover of the city. And so for those, we need to be bringing them forward to you. And so for those, we need to be bringing them forward to you, uh, hopefully in the next three to four months. Uh, the rest, I mean, some of them can probably wait two years. One, we just updated in June, uh, the collection development policy. I think it's good. I mean, the request for reconsideration policy, I think it's solid. I think we have a lot of really good policies. So I don't think it's going to be a major lift. Getting the ones fixed though, that are now I would say inadequate for what our current, uh, system of governance is, is is going to be a top priority for us. So one or, one or two, uh, uh, a meeting, I think is fine. You know, four policies in a month is a lot. And I don't think we'll be bringing you that many. So.
I have, well, I have a question, but Benita, um, for the commission coming on December 5th, well, is that like a work, what exactly will we be, are we going to work on something then, or are they going to present to us? I think, wha- what's the commission going? What's the, the, what are, what are we going to do together?
Good question. I mean, I, I think it is the opportunity to sort of pass the baton and to just have this transition of, um, more official and because we haven't gathered together, um, that's what it's about. But I think it's a staff driven conversation because the commission, you know, wouldn't be coming with a list or, you know, and, but I think it's, you know, just with both bodies participating in that. And you know, when we're done with that agenda item, the commission members could be invited to depart and, you know, we could continue on with our business.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Good discussion, guys. Great. Marco, you have more to talk to us about?
That's it for now. Well, we'll be back on the, um, I'll be back for the, the, uh, December 5th meeting and we'll be working on things in between. And, um, Johnny, I'll follow up with you to make sure that we align before that meeting to coordinate how we're going to roll out, uh, and a facilitation of discussion.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you so much for, for all your work on this and for organizing this piece in particular.
Yeah, of course. Thanks.
You.
All right. So I think our next thing is library district director updates.
Yeah. So that was, uh, that was the heavy lift and thank you, Marco. Marco's doing a great job, by the way, for us. And we're so happy to have a lead line. Um, makes my job really simple tonight. Um, so, um, yeah, the big news was we advertised, uh, nine jobs today. So nine jobs, I believe six of them were advertised externally and are open for applications. A lot of those are the jobs that we deem to be operationally critical. So for day one, and that's, uh, HR manager, facilities manager and communications manager. Uh, there are several other jobs that are in there as well, as, as well as several internal postings. The internal postings are geared toward hiring, uh, back uh, George Reynolds branch staffs that would be prepared to open seven days a week come January 1. So, uh, or roughly in that timeframe, uh, in, in January, we will return Reynolds to seven days a week. So that's the really, really big news and pretty exciting. I think we hadn't posted more than a half an hour and we had our first application um, online, not from somebody we know, uh, but that, uh, kind of speaks to the effectiveness of what little, uh, preamble we've put into this, which we did post on on social media that we were going to be having jobs opening sometime soon and watch out for this website. So that was great that there was a job, uh, application that came in like 30 minutes after we posted, uh, super exciting. Um, the other thing then I have to do really is, uh, will be, uh, the responsibility of of the, uh, finance committee, Jen Yi and Sylvia, who I realize is not here this evening, but is to recommend an auditor. Um, we did interview, uh, audit firm and selected McMahon and Associates. They seem to be a really great firm. I think they would be a really good fit. Uh, the role of the auditor, uh, though, in the, uh, as we've talked about in previous meetings, that is somebody that the board hires, right? So that is not something that the library, uh, district or, uh, myself hires that position. The auditor is someone who you hire and who reports to you. And the, the purpose of that role is that they will reach out individually to the various trustees to ask questions if you have any concerns, uh, individually, they will, they will seek that out, uh, in attempts to then go in and help us with setting up the actual finance, uh, software that we will be using through the course of 2024 and that they will in turn be auditing, right? Um, so they will hopefully give us good advice on how to meet, um, certain requirements that are necessary for, uh, a state audit. Um, and the firm that selected McMahon and Associates, I think, I think they list three districts in the, um, form that you have in your pack tonight. I believe the, uh, senior, uh, accountant who will be looking over our account actually uh, manages 15 library districts. So there, there, they, they do, um, the firm itself is focused entirely on government, uh, and special entities. So there is a little bit of bleed over in the entirety of their firm in the sense in which HOAs, uh, are considered in some communities, uh, ancillary to a special en- entity. And so they do get into some things like that, but primarily their business and the accountant that we will be working with, the accounting team that we will be working with, uh, focuses only on districts and only on districts in the state of Colorado. So I think that's a really big benefit to the firm. Um, and will hopefully provide us with good guidance. Um, the way it operates, right? They'll, they will do, they will do individual sessions with you and then come back to do some reporting. The final audit, once they've done, there will be things that they are recommending for changes and or updates because we're asking them basically to do everything, uh, at the outset to set us up for being, um, or getting a good audit in 2023 and in 2024. So they will be recommending policies. Uh, but the plan of the audit firm is that they would reach out back to you guys if there were, if there were any anomalies, uh, in the way in which things are set up, any questions. Those would be ironed out and have, you would have had a chance to speak with the auditor about whatever concerns you may have prior to it becoming a public meeting. So they will announce any changes or updates or any errors that we had in the course of the year. And that's the plan going forward. Um, but it won't come as a surprise to you at a public meeting where you were all like shocked that you hear something new. Uh, you will have heard about it prior to the public meeting where they announce, um, what changes and or, uh, errors there may have been in the past year. So I'll turn it over to, to Jen, um, Sylvia, I'm sorry, can't be here because, uh, she was in on that conversation.
Thanks, David. Yeah, I, you, you said all the bullets I had prepared. Um, I, I think Sylvia and I are, are pretty confidently recommending this audit firm to the board, given their experience with districts and governments. Um, hope you, hopefully you all had a chance to kind of review their proposal and their letters of good standing and so on. Um, I, um, I asked some questions about sort of the, the difference in the services they would be providing us in this initial first year. Um, as we're setting up systems and, and looking at controls and policies and recommendations and so on. And then sort of the, the following two years, uh, that they've proposed in the, in the, in the document, um, understanding that this first year is a lot more sort of consultation hours around some of that startup, uh, startup work. And then the following two years are really around kind of the field work and the audit work and, and, and so on. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, we're pretty psyched about, about them. David and Jennifer really like them, you know, and I think that's, that's a really important piece of this is, um, as having a trusted partner in terms of really setting up um, the right systems and controls for us to, to get off on the, on, on the right foot. Um, so yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer. I mean, David sort of covered most of it, um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions as a peer, um, and as someone who is 50% of the subcommittee that's recommending that we, we hire these folks. Um, I will answer the questions to the extent that I can, given sort of a little, the little bit of extra information that I requested about their services. Yeah, Benita.
So how many firms did you interview?
McMahon was the only one that we formally interviewed. Yeah.
How many responded to the RFP?
Uh, only four, uh, three of which was to decline. We, we solicited seven or eight proposals. Um, all of them said that they would bid. Um, one declined early on in the process. Two declined, uh, pretty much at the last minute, but I, but I respect the uh, courtesy that they made the effort at least to say like, hey, we couldn't get it together in time. Uh, McMahon had asked the most questions through the course of the process, like we have an open question period and they had asked a number of questions around para, and oh, I can't remember what all questions they had submitted, uh, in writing. Um, but they had asked the most substantive questions in the process. I did, I did anticipate that more firms would, um, turn in proposals, but no, in the end, uh, Owen McMahon turned in a full, uh, full proposal.
And it's a, a one-year arrangement.
It's a one-year and eight arrangement that's renewable for up to three years. I mean, you could go on longer than that, but that, that would be the substance of the contract. Kim can address how we do that. It's subject to appropriation and obviously uh, satisfactory work at the end of the year and you're satisfied with the McMahon and Associates. Uh, if you're not satisfied with McMahon and Associates, we would go back out to bid.
And it, Benita, the, the lack of response is not surprising. Since COVID, it's been almost impossible to get auditors. They're all, they're all busy and they don't have the staff anymore to, to do the work. Um, McMahon does probably 15 of our entities. Um, and they've always been great. So.
Very good. Would they be regular attendees at our meetings or would they be agended in when needed?
Agended in when needed, Benita. And I, and I suspect that, uh, I anticipate that in 20, well, between now and 2020, end of 2024, uh, it will be there in a policy advisory role around financial policies. And then secondarily to provide the 2023 audit. And that'll probably be around April. Uh, when they will be done with the 2023 audit. I don't, I don't think the 2023 audit is a heavy lift, but they really won't begin it until end of January and then going through all of it. But the time that we would spend now in contract with them currently would be, um, you know, in terms of the setup of Sage Intact, the financial system, and then what levels of reporting we have. And I guarantee you, they're going to, they're going to give us a whole host of advice because as you all are well aware, right now we're keeping all of our records on a Excel spreadsheet. Uh, there's not a lot of transactions, but it's, it's obviously not a best practice.
And David, if I understood, um, our earlier conversation, in addition to putting them in the agenda, they will be reaching out, they will basically have a timeline that we'll be aware of to reach out to individual board members um, with questions and discussions and comments as well. So.
Yeah, and I that, that's correct. And I, and I suspect that will take place before the end of the year. Uh, so once we enter in, we'll, you know, if you approve of them tonight, I will reach out to them tomorrow to explain that they have been thing, we need to go through the contract process. Once we've entered into contract with them, uh, then I should expect one of their very first things will be is to ask for all of your contact information and they'll be reaching out to you individually.
And we have tentatively scheduled them on our December 12th agenda. That's a virtual, um, so that will be an opportunity to meet them and ask questions of them directly if we approve this tonight. Great. Thanks for that update, Jen. And plus questions, any other questions or comments? Okay. Is this something we need a, uh, motion to approve?
We do.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve entering into contract with McMahon? Great, Benita.
Mm-hmm. A second.
Jen, okay. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
You're saying head up? Yeah. Okay, great. That's unanimous. Wonderful. And thank you again, um, Jen and Sylvia and David for great work in reviewing this, this firm. It'll be great to have them on board and help us with especially those financial policies. Cause I know that's high priority for Jen. She has given us a list of financial policies that she thinks we need right away. So it'll be great to sit down with the auditor and go through those.
Yeah. And so the lot, the other bit of good news, uh, is that is our next to last consultant that we need to hire for the 2023 transition. Um, the last one will be coming before you next week. Uh, and that is a, uh, will be in the form of a letter of agreement to hire a property and casualty insurance broker. Um, Kara and Doug and I interviewed a candidate last week and spoke to another one. Um, I've spoken to both firms, uh, will be bringing forward a recommendation in December 14th. And so it's not a, there's not a cost associated with it. And I'm sorry, November 14th. There's not a cost associated with it directly, right? So indirectly, uh, the broker like FH, um, is paid through the insurance, uh, companies that ultimately uh, bid on and get the successful contract. Uh, even more so than with FH, because with FH, with the health insurance, we also contracted back with them for the clinic. So there is a direct fee that does go to FH. Uh, that will not be the case for, um, the property and casualty company, although they do offer, um, all these insurance brokers offer a host of services. This company offers very few, um, but one thing that they did offer that we may, uh, look at it in terms of interest is contractor view. So whether or not we would have an interest in doing contract review through, um, the insurance broker, that is a service that the brokerage firm offers.
That seems like a wise thing to look at, given how many contracts there are to review.
It is a lot of contracts and, and there's even more coming. So, um,
Well, they also, um, they do some risk analysis, safety stuff too, that was.
Yeah, like any, I, I get any broker, like they would, they, they will do, I mean, that's, that's part of the course, right? We need them to come in and do risk analysis in terms of all the spaces. Uh, looking at, uh, staff procedures and especially around uh, facilities related work. And so they will do, um, not a facilities assessment, but an assessment of, uh, the work around facilities and what, where, where, uh, risk, uh, is potentially imminent. But, um, yeah, we will bring that back next week. Uh, yeah, and it'll be great. I, I mean, I think, um, we will not have, we need to get them on board, uh, by the 15th really, in order to get the property liability and workman's comp, uh, workers comp in place by January 1. We will probably not have every single insurance policy that we're going to carry in place by January 1, but I think that'll be fine. Most of the other ones are ones that we can look at, uh, for maybe whether or not we would have future, they would have future applications or we may consider uh, coverage on certain special kinds of things. But certainly property casualty and workers comp.
David, as I understand it, there's a direct connection here to finishing up the leases in the IGA as well, because there's still open questions about how we're handling insurance there with the city. And the city has agreed that we can sit down with the broker and work that through. And I see Kim nodding. So yeah, getting them on board so we can get all of that wrapped up will be really helpful.
Yep.
Anything else from you, David?
Nope, that's it. That concludes my report unless there's any questions about anything. Well, if not, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, Jen, you have a short-term investment strategy recommendation?
Um, I do not have a recommendation, but I do have an update. Um, we, uh, we actually, we, so we met last week or gosh, was that last, last Friday with the relationship manager or the banker from JP Morgan Chase, uh, who handles kind of most of the government institutional clients uh, in, in the front range area and a liquidity specialist who kind of asked a little bit about our situation, sort of why, why, why were we, um, what, what are we doing and why do we need to be talking to a liquidity specialist? So we had a sort of introductory conversation with them in which they showed us a couple of sort of confusing slides about what the different options were. Um, and I, uh, I asked because my brain doesn't work in a way where people say a lot of things and I'm able to sort it. I sort of am a more visual person. So I sort of asked them to now knowing some of our, um, our situation, which is that we have these deferred payments to the city. We'll have some cash sitting in our bank account. We'll have some cash sitting in our bank account that would be great to, you know, make, invest um. In a, in a. Risk i- in a low risk liquid way. Um I asked him to sort of make like a side by side chart of all of our different options, sort of pros, cons. Um. So that we could together review the options and, and um maybe Sylvia and I would sort of. Prioritize our top choices and sort of come to you with that recommendation, but I didn't feel we, the, after that first conversation, there was no real. Um. Sense that we could make, make a real recommendation for all of you at this point. So um they said they would have that to us by kind of the end of this week. And so I will, Johnny, I will, Johnny, Benita, I'll give you an update on. When we can come back to you with something a little bit more concrete, but sort of that's, that's the update was. Um they were gathering information, they were sharing some information, but not in a way that was sort of structured enough for us to. To really see anything material tonight.
Great, that makes a lot of sense, Jen, thanks.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think we'll probably bring, have something ready to go by December. Uh which would enable us to uh. Apportion the money by the first of January, right? So they only do it on a monthly basis where they do have money. Uh and so if we had a recommendation to you by the first week of. December, if there was a recommendation to be made by the first week of December, um. Be something we do, and this is not like I, I still believe that we, we need a long term financial strategy on what we're going to be doing with the money. Uh this is just so that we're not um being stupid with our money because um in all. You know, just totally frank, right? Twenty twenty four. The first few years of the district. We are going to be cash rich. And especially in twenty twenty four, um the cash flow analysis that I've done. Doesn't really show us dropping below twelve million dollars in the bank that's not needed at any time whatsoever. Uh now. The money drops. Down to around twelve when we make the first payment to the city, and by the time we make the second payment to the city in December, uh it will drop down well below twelve. Um but uh I think, you know, the potential. Is there for us to earn, you know, and that's a discussion that I think you guys have had a couple of times, like there's potential for us to earn at least. Two, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars on that money in the course of twenty twenty four. And uh I, I think we would be remiss and. Uh doing a, a poor job with the taxpayers' money not to leverage that money because the bank, the bank, I assure you will be making money on that money. Uh and then as far as the risk averse, right? So we can look at all different kinds of things when we get to the financial strategy, you know, the, the real financial strategy, which is not until next year. But in, in none of this, while keeping the money with Chase, um if you remember when we first signed up with Chase, JP Morgan. Um, all of our money is collateralized at one hundred and two percent. They have to do that for government entities. So at no time, even though they may be putting money into CDs or into money market accounts or different things like that, the hunt, the complete. Total amount of money that we have remains collateralized at one hundred and two percent. Uh it's a pretty risk free strategy to say like, let's find some low risk investment that's better than simply just keeping it in our checking account.
And. Yeah, Jen and David, can you guys be sure that um I had sent out, I don't know when it was. Those two statutes that list the qualifying um investments. And if you can get, it would be best if you could get from them based on their recommendations, some statement that. These all qualify under these statutes. Because it's very difficult for us to determine that, but they should know. Um and those statutes are pretty strict.
Yeah, they brought them up at the meeting, Kim, and I, I think if you can send me the statutes, I'm. Happy to forward them back onto them to make sure that whatever they recommending or recommending they comply.
Great.
Thanks, thanks for the reminder, Kim.
And uh David, just from an agenda planning perspective, um if you're looking at December fifth for that. In December fifth is looking a little crowded, so you might want to just take a look at this draft agenda thing we've got going. To see what you think we maybe move around um. And, and for other folks, so the other things that right now, in addition to the policy work plan review, the things we have. On the December fifth agenda are the communication plan for the library closure in December. We need to put some time and energy into that. Um we need to make sure the city has a plan. For sheltering unsheltered people while the library is closed for five days if there's a cold snap. So David has started that conversation uh with the housing people. And then there's the celebration, which we need to start planning for. So some of those are fun and they shouldn't necessarily be big, but we've got quite a few things. Um piling up for that one, so just a heads up. You're muted, David.
Speaking of the celebration, um I did get a list of like. I don't know. Uh twenty some years of library commissioners, so we'll invite them to a, a party in January.
Do we have a date for that?
We don't. Um the, the, there is a staff member who's designated as uh. In charge of the planning prep preparations for the reopening. I mean, they did ask if it could be not the first week of January, but the second week of January. I'm not gonna weigh in until they come back with a plan and I. I, I don't think you guys would care either, right? If it's, we open. Because we'll reopen to the public on January second. If we do a ribbon cutting on January eighth. Is anybody gonna have any heartburn? I, I don't, it's not something that I care anything about. I mean, I want to have a big party and. Donuts and pizza and everything else, but. But aside from that, I.
Donuts and pizza.
Yes.
I think getting a little distance from all the New Years and holiday celebrations makes some sense too, so yeah, I think if it's a couple of weeks in, that should be great.
My youngest son wants to be a restaurateur, Jen, just as far as the pizza and donuts. And so his, his actual invention, which I think is a brilliant idea, is the meat, the meatball donut. So he wants to make the meatball donut and he would, he's gonna call the, he's gonna call the restaurant um. After his mother's name, but so Katie's Deep Dish, so it's a, you know, pizza place, but we sell meatball donuts essentially.
So is this gonna be a savory donut?
You know, it's sweet and savory, Johnny. It's a meatball donut. It's like, it's got everything all in it and it is. From the mind of a seven year old, and I think it's, I think it might be brilliant, but.
We should debut it at the party.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your work on this, uh Jen, and we'll look forward to that recommendation too. Um, so I think we're up to trustee matters. Um, the only thing I would have is just to review the upcoming meetings. So next week, we are in person. And then we're off for the rest of November. And then we are December fifth in person. And December twelfth virtual again. And then we're off for the rest of December. And right now I'm thinking we don't come back until January fifteenth. If you guys think we need. To come in a week earlier, we can do that, but I have us. Starting on kind of a, a schedule of our regular meeting is the fifteenth, that third Tuesday. And then the thirtieth, so have them spread two weeks apart, and I've tried to lay out a tentative schedule that has two weeks apart at least through June. Um but if you guys think you want to do something um different than that, let me know. Anything else from trustees? Okay, Kim, I think we have some IGA finalization business to do.
We, we do, and before we jumped there, I wanted to point out to you in the status report under the Mill Levy certification. So the plan is to wait until tomorrow to figure out what happens with um HH. And then David and Jennifer can run numbers for us and we can do our certification. We don't really, you're gonna assess the Mill Levy that you have, no matter what, but the question is, what are the numbers that result from that? Um and last week. The, we've kind of been, remember I've always been hemming and hawing about that provision I read to you. Um, the SDA was very firm in their position and last week they became very squishy. So we're waiting till tomorrow morning. We'll see what happens with HH and then we'll let you know whether we think we need to have a hearing. To waive that inflation cap. Um you're in a position because of the recency of your. Uh election question and the way we wrote it, that, you know, we're more confident than any of the other ones that you don't need it, but. We'll wait and see what happens tonight and let you know right away. And we have, we still have time to do it if we have to.
Yeah, and polls are closed.
Yeah, yes. Um then in your meeting packet, you have the two IGAs that went to the city council. The form that you have them in is the form that went to the city council. Um I highlighted in each of those some issues that were brought up, all of, actually all of the issues that were brought up in the city council. And we can run through those so you can see. Uh what's changed or what's going to change and I can talk you through what that means. Um Jennifer, if you want me to share, I can do that. If not, the PDF that you have is bookmarked. Where each of the changes is raised and then my highlighting and handwritten comments are there. So whichever you'd prefer.
Well, Kim, can you share your screen?
Can you share it on the screen because we're recording?
Yep.
Yeah.
Can you make me the host, Jen, Jennifer?
Uh you are a co-host.
Okay. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
So the first item is in the three way IGA. Section two point three point five. This was the right of first refusal. I had changed this around from um. It, it had been set to their benefit in the earlier drafts. I now changed it around to ours since we're leasing. So the language says the city will not sell Carnegie, uh George Reynolds. Or North Bolder, Boulder or the downtown Maine without first offering it to the library district. The city council wanted a process fleshed out there. Uh in my conversations with the city attorney today, um she asked me to draft those changes. Uh my expectation or my plan is to simply make it like a, a straightforward right of first refusal. If they decide to sell, they go ahead and get bids and they offer it to us at whatever their lowest bid is. Um. The second item, section two point three point six. We took out, remember again, I was.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Jen, sorry, Kim, to interrupt you just for that one. They, we would have the writer first for refusal to, for whatever their lowest bid is, not whatever their highest bid was.
Your highest bid, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I was like, that seems like a really, that does not. That'd be great if you did that. Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Um, section two point three point six, we have this lengthy. Uh list of insurance coverages and you remember I had great concerns about those because they, they don't take into account. Um the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act and there are things in there like us doing complete replacements of. Buildings like the main library if there's a casualty loss. But our interest is only twenty years at the most and we could have a casualty lost in, lost in the nineteenth year. I don't see why we would replace the building. Um, so, and I'm also not sure that, that an insurance company would agree that we have a coverable risk. Our risk is, is in the lease, not in the, the building. So um they've agreed that we can take time, as Johnny mentioned earlier. To talk about this with the broker and then we'll redraft that language. The city council agreed to authorize. The um city manager to approve this and sign it. Whenever we figure out what it is. So all of the insurance language has been removed from all of the leases and all of the IGAs. And uh we, we'll simply be inserting that the city manager can approve that whenever we get it done. The next item is in the. Library leases. Let's see. This, this particular one is in the um. Which one is it? In Boulder. Well, this will show up in several of the leases, but. Uh term and termination, and this is the one we were most, most interested in. Became the most talked about topic in front of the city council, but turned out there was just a misunderstanding. This section two A landlord and tenant agree to meet in no less than five year intervals. That's going to be deleted because we can meet anytime we want to. It's not a, not an issue. Two B is the one that we really wanted, which was tenant has the absolute right to terminate this lease on its anniversary date every third anniversary. Without consequences upon ninety days written notice to the landlord. They did agree to that. So that will be left. The other one will be deleted. Um. Next item that was discussed is in the civic center. Area lease agreement. Um, district will also be responsible for maintenance of the sidewalks along Arapahoe Avenue on the eastern side. Uh that language was corrected to at least make it clear what we're talking about. Um I raised this issue with Chris. And he's going to provide us an explanation. He said it's necessary for some reason. I don't know what that is, but we'll find out. And then um. I suspect it's not going to change because he seemed pretty confident that that was necessary.
So Kim, a question on that. I think the other thing was we were concerned about who's. Doing the rest of the sidewalk. It wasn't just, is the district doing that? Is, is the city doing the rest of the sidewalk? Because that's not addressed. It's not a multi-use path.
Okay, yeah. I think that was always assumed.
Well, as we just discussed around the North Boulder, the new North Boulder branch, I wouldn't necessarily.
Don't assume, don't assume anything. Okay, so we, we'll get that added in also. Um. This next item, library district will be added. So you remember that we requested. Uh the opportunity to recoup costs when there are. City events or any other events in the parking lot or outside the library. Because of the heavy use of the library by people who are attending those events, going to the bathrooms and things. What's been added here uh was approved that the library district will be added as a referral entity for special event applications. By third parties in order for the district to recoup its costs incurred because of the event. So the city will let us know that somebody's applied for an event license or permit. And at that point, um library facilities or whoever is appointed to do that will decide. Yes, we'll, we'll approve the permit, but. It's twelve hundred dollars or it's three hundred dollars, whatever that is. Um. The next item that was a, a big one for us. Do it here. This is the appointment IGA. And I believe the last time we talked, there was a discussion of. Fleshing out a process for the appointment, which. These uh, the section B was what I came up with and it was all accepted. So. Essentially, library district may appoint up to two members to the board of trustees. Uh to participate in the selection committee as non-voting ex-officio members. B, the board of trustees will assist in the appointment process by, and this was the important part. Advising the city and the county of an existing or impending vacancy. And requesting a schedule for the selection committee work. And two, including with the request, a draft application package and proposed application and interview questions. For review and approval by the selection committee. So you'll not only notify them that it's time, but you'll provide the application package. Um, three, suggesting a proposed schedule and plan for advertising, public outreach and notice of the opportunity. And four, collecting the applications, compiling the information and submitting it to the selection committee in preparation for interviews. Um and then C, the selection committee will build an application and search process. Which will seek to be inclusive of people of color in the service area. That was language that the BOCC replaced. Um uh. From our language, which included geographic diversity and it was just much broader. Um, the city did not approve this language. Um, the city did not approve this language. So I communicated with Janet today, the city attorney. And what they're going to do is reinsert the city's language in addition to this language. So we'll have, a- and that, that city's language was the language we approved initially. So it includes the geographic diversity uh, and um, you know, racial and everything else.
What is, what, who was, who's the B O C C? I'm sorry, Kim.
Oh, I'm sorry, county commissioners.
Oh, okay. They, 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 they put in people of color, like, and then city wanted more.
Well, no, we had more.
We had more.
City and us had agreed to more. Then the county removed it and put this in. I, I'm not sure what the thinking was. Um, but it's gonna go back to them now with this language plus the original language.
It sounded to me like it got a little bit confused.
I think so too.
Our original language had geographic and demographic diversity representing the service area. And the county, county commissioners proposed some language getting to this application process around people of color, different language than we see. And the city didn't like the language that the board of county commissioners proposed. So they reworded the commission, the commissioners' language to this, which left out the whole diversity thing. So hopefully, when they see it as all together, that will get cleared up. It didn't make sense for the county commissioners to be removing geographic diversity in particular, since that's been an issue for them.
Yep. Yes, I think that'll be, I think that'll be pretty straightforward. Um, and then this uh, little eye underneath. I'm kind of proud of this one, although it wasn't my idea. Um, Chris Messchuk, while we were negotiating all this language, said I had raised the issue that, that I had raised with you about making sure that when the board of county commissioners changes, we don't end up with someone who uh gets appointed who's anti-book, anti-library, um, part of a book banning crowd. And Chris said, well, isn't, aren't there some statements uh, that the A L A or somebody promulgates that address that? That we could attach. And this, I think this is great. So applicants will be required to acknowledge and pledge to support and promote the principles set forth in the American Library Association Library Bill of Rights and the trustee's statement of ethics, copies of which are attached as exhibit C. Um, it's more than, than I could have asked for.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. I wonder, do, I can't remember, forgive me for not knowing this off the top, is this in our bylaws as well? Like this? Yeah.
The Bill of, the Bill of Rights is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Statement of Ethics is not, and I think that's something we should probably include when we update.
Yep.
And there, there are copies of those attached to this, the copy that you have. If you want to read them, they're, they're very good, very comprehensive. Um, and then the other item we were looking for in here is this process will remain in effect unless otherwise agreed to by the parties pursuant to one point two. What we had actually talked about was limiting it to three years or revisiting it in three years. If you go back to section one point two, it provides that we can revisit this at any time, at anybody's request. So that was the uh, city attorney's proposed solution, which I thought was, was great. And I believe those are all the areas that we discussed with the city. So it's, you know, it's before you now, if you want to approve them now, subject to um, these changes and how they're worded with approval of of Johnny and me and David, or however you want to do it, we can do that now. Or if you want us to bring it back to the next meeting, we can do that also. Oh, there's two o- two other issues I meant to bring up. Um, I got an email from the city attorney's office today that listed kind of a breakout of things that need to be done and who's going to do them. And in that list, she had included uh, addressing changes to the provisions inherent about the I S P, which currently just states that the city will be the I S P provider for as long as we need them uh, until we decide otherwise. And then the other provision had to do with the fiber. Her comment was uh, that we needed to make, that they wanted to make, they needed to make per the city council some changes to that. I reached back out to her and said, I don't, I don't remember any discussion of that at all. Um, she did respond and say, yes, there wasn't any. Uh, but maybe we need to have leases or some kind of agreements as to how those things are used. So I'll deal with her on that. Uh, I don't think there's any lease of the
IP or reign agreement.
It was always just being provided. The fiber was being, I don't know if you can give it to us. You know, that may be some technical issue, but um, the fiber is free. The I S P, I think may have had some cost associated with it, but um, but we'll address that.
Didn't, don't they give I S P to the county? I mean, I guess, don't they, aren't they the county's I S P as well? So I mean, I, whatever terms, I guess they have with the county.
Yeah, and, and we had already agreed to that in this agreement. So I don't know where, why she included that in the email. And then when I confronted her with it, she just said, well, maybe we need some other documents to memorialize that. I don't think, I think it's pretty straightforward, but we'll let you know how that goes.
Oh, really? Okay, so um So the question is, what, Kim, you want us to, to give you like a nod to like Johnny and you and Benita to finalize this stuff?
Good Doug, there is a proposed um, motion included in the package.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I saw that. Okay.
Yeah, and effectively, it's the same thing the city council did, which is we approve this subjects to basically some wordsmithing that still has to be done. Um, so it doesn't have to come back to the board um, until, without the wordsmithing. And then once the lawyers are all done with everything, then we can sign it. I think that's the intent.
Yeah, and there's the language for the um, agreement that includes the county commissioners. And right there is the language for the, the bigger I G A between the city and the trustees. So if you want to do that, that's fine. If you want us to bring it back, we can do that. I don't think there was anything um, that's going to have a lot of substance that's gonna change.
I agree.
What is the timing with the county?
Always a good question.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that. I know that there was, there were some exchanges today with Olivia um, Lucas, who's the county attorney working on this. And she was saying she's gotta take everything back to them. So we don't know, but we don't know when.
But again, remember, them not approving this doesn't affect us. We go forward. And, and in the drafted, uh, long-term agenda thing I'm working on, we are starting on the process for new applications in January and sending it off in February. Excuse me, mirroring the schedule that's in the minutes from last meeting, so. So does anybody have a, have a desire to have the two-party agreement come back to us? Or, or is everyone okay letting us just do the wordsmithing and then be done? Anyone who objects to just doing the wordsmithing, can you raise your hand? Okay, looks like we're good for that. Uh, does somebody want to make the motion here that Kim's got up on the screen?
I would just add that we do have a, an I G A subcommittee. It's like the only subcommittee that I seem to have a little bit of activity on. So I think it, that motion says it should reflect that there's an I G A subcommittee, I guess, standing through by the, the I G A subcommittee.
That's a good addition, Benita. So was that a motion?
So I would move approval of the um, the motion with the addition of the I G A subcommittee substituting for president of the board. In that motion.
Substitute, I think it has to be in addition, Benita, because I think the president has to be in there to approve.
Okay, well, like the I G A subcommittee, which includes the president of the board?
I'm not on the I G A subcommittee. It's you and Kara.
Yeah, you are.
No, it's you and Kara.
I thought you were.
No. I mean, once we decided that we weren't doing negotiations, the I G A subcommittee really became something that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So if you want to put the vice president, because I think it's you that wants to be in there, I have no objection to that.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Because you and I are the ones effectively who've been it, but, but that's not actually how we set it up.
So uh, so sue me, can we so move this clause, I move for the board of trustees to approve the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Boulder, Colorado and Boulder Public Library District, substantially in the form presented, but allowing for changes approved by the district director, president of the board, vice president of the board, and legal counsel, as discussed by the board prior to this motion. Is everyone okay with that?
It moves, yep. Is there a second? I'll second.
I thought there was a motion, but anyway.
That was the motion.
No, no, I know, but I thought I made the motion, but I think you did then.
Oh, okay. I was just, I, I wasn't
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Somebody else seconded, that's fine.
Okay.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get her done, get her done.
That's a big, big leap. And then we have the uh, the three-way I G A, so the appointment I G A. Um, do you want to do this motion?
I'll, I'll move this one because I'm in the county. The only thing is, it's the, it says the count of, oh, 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 the count of Boulder. You might want the county of Boulder. But I move the board of trustees approve execution of the I G A among the sorry, county of Boulder, Colorado, the city of Boulder, Colorado, and the Boulder Public Library District regarding joint obligations substantially in the form presented, but allowing changes approved by the district director, president of the board, vice president of the board, and legal counsel, as discussed by the board prior to this motion.
Yeah, I'll second this one too.
I think Kara beat you, Johnny.
Oh, yeah, Kara.
Yeah, I didn't see your hand, great.
She's gotta represent.
I think we can assure you that we would not agree to this without that broader representation language. Because I think that's fundamental to what the library is about, trying to represent all of the interests that are in the service area, so. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Sam, do I hear your voice?
Aye.
Okay, great. That's down for us too. Wonderful.
That's it from me for now, and uh, great work, you guys. That's exciting to have that done.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Thanks to you and your team. Okay, well, that's everything that's on our agenda. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order?
Well, I, I don't want to wordsmith either, and certainly it's not my role to wordsmith, but uh, Kim, I would be, I think the board would have, you know, want to have some of the financial information. Because I think that's what the city's holding out for is what they're gonna charge us for the I S P. And I honestly, I, I mean, we can be off in six months if if, if we need to be, we're building a backup I S P anyway uh, on the assumption that the city was gonna give us I S P access for a year. But if their fees are, you know, exorbitant, we can get out quicker than that. Uh, and then the second one is on the fiber. I don't, I mean, it'll be interesting to find out what it is the city wants, but I the, the reason we ask for strands of fiber is so that we would have uh, unrestricted and uh, not controlled by the city access to our internet. And that, I think, is pretty critical to establish in that, uh, that, that, that there's not that while they're giving us three strands, they're giving it to us. It's not like they're gonna continue to control those three strands. It could be the case that we, not, not that we're planning on leveraging it for revenue, but we may decide to leverage it for other means such as providing free internet access to a neighborhood uh, manufactured home community.
And David, I think um, it's, they only gave us two strands, which was the original proposal, and I had pushed back with three, but it didn't get anywhere. But uh, again, the city council did not comment on that at all, nor did they comment on the I S P. So I don't think there's anything to change there unless somebody in the staff is completely changing direction now.
Yeah, I don't know either, you know, so we need permission from the city, right? Since as leasers, we need permission from the city to be able to bring in our own strands of fiber. If we choose to go with another I S P, right? So we need to be able to bring in another fiber from another company into the building.
I think we have that, that right?
Yeah, and so we, we just, there are some things that we'll need to establish in that relationship, so we don't just, so we have some control.
Yeah, maybe that's what you, maybe that's
Once again, if, if they come up with something that just seems out of line, I think we just elevate it again to Chris and Nurya because this has never been an issue before. So this may be one of those last-minute staff things as frequently happens.
Yep. All right.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I know some of you are off to election parties. So great meeting, and we are adjourned.